I was watching the board meeting from the Saratoga Springs Library right before I came on here tonight.
For any particular purpose?
Oh, you know, guys got to have a guys got to have a hobby.
Exactly. I was gonna ask that too, but I let I like I was like on purpose.
Yeah, you know.
Accident.
Yeah, whoops. No, it just was like, what are they doing over there? Oh, yeah. All the same stuff.
So it's live on the website now.
Okay, thanks, Kristen.
Okay, I think we're we got everyone here. We're ready to go six one. Now we can get going. It's I'd like to call the Valentine's Day, Monday, February 14th meeting, special meeting of the Bethlehem Board of Trustees, the monthly meeting to order with the first order business being public participation.
Okay, I have nothing in the last little bit. I'll just check one more time.
Okay.
But I do have some that I received earlier, starting on Friday of last week. And I'll read those. None of those are going to go over three minutes. Just in the body of an email from James McGoffin, Dr. James McGoffin. Starts the mask mandate has been dropped by New York State and no local ordinance exists. Therefore, the public institutions of our town must be available to those who don't want to wear masks. It is an undue burden on taxpayers. If you want to continue to wear one, you may do so. But please update your website and signage ASAP. And then a second email from him. I completely understand complying with state and local laws and have respected the obligation, but that has ended. On what authorities can trustees mandate face coverings or any other dress code for taxpayers that don't want to wear them, but still want to access the public libraries they pay for. The trustees must have some limits as to their power where their powers ends. Seems like many have forgotten restraint. Many patrons will no longer be carrying a mask. Why should they? But they will be denied access because authority is being abused. A public library is not a school. I am well aware of that debate. It simply makes absolutely no sense to continue to impose these measures at the library. Please express mine and many others frustration with this intransigence from the library and its trustees. Thank you. That's number one. Number two, hi, sir. I was give your email by a staff member today when I asked about your mask law. I am I incorrect that Bethlehem Public Library is a public library? If so, under what authority does the library have to mandate the wearing of masks now that our great governor has lifted the public requirement? If it is public property, anyone can come in and cannot be singled out for a specific reason, like wearing or not wearing a mask. Is there a state law that I don't know about that allows a public building to pass a mask law like this? I just want to be informed and follow the law, but I don't think that this law that is law as much as a courtesy to wear a mask. I have trouble breathing with the mask on and keep my distance from people. So I don't understand this law if it is a law. Please get back to me. I'm supposed to meet friends at the public library Sunday to have a reading session. And then after my answer, hi, sir. Thank you for your quick response, and I think you can see the confusion as a public entity cannot make law without legislative body that has authority to pass a law. So in essence, it's just a request, as there is no penalty for breaking the law. I hope the board of the board listens to the people and follows the science on this, so they do not go down the slippery slope and leave our public library open to legal action as they lack a legislative body to enact the law. Appreciate the help and hope to keep going to the library without masks on as I am vaccinated. The science was the science was get vaccinated and I did. But now we have stricter rules in place than before we even had vaccines. Thank you and have an enjoyable weekend, Miles. And I have an anonymous email says it's from staff. But there's no reply, no reply to the email. If the board is having meetings online, we should still have a required mask policy. If they're not willing to put themselves in a room where they're all wear masks, why are they considering put their staff in a position of being around people who don't wear one? Will you be allowing staff who aren't comfortable with this to work from home or off the floor until numbers are more reasonable? And then the last one is from Brian Sweeney. Dear Jeff and Catherine, to the Bethlehem to the Bethlehem Library Board of Trustees, Director and Assistant Directors. I just finished watching the October 25th, 2021 and February 3rd, 2022 meetings of the Ad hoc Fines Committee Committee on Fines on the library's YouTube channel. I feel compelled to reach out while the meetings are fresh in my mind to commend all members of the board, as well as Jeff and Catherine for engaging in such a thoughtful, interesting and substantive discussion about the pros and cons of fine elimination, with a particular attention to questions of access and equity, as well as to such issues as the costs in terms of labor, goodwill, etc., of fine enforcement. Having listened carefully to all sides presented in the conversation, I feel persuaded by Catherine's data presentations and by statements by various trustees that the often invisible issues of equity and class in our community create a strong ethical imperative for the ending of fines. I am also stirred by Dr. Witchesing's call that Bethlehem Public Library lead rather than follow on this issue. Most of all, I am reminded of how fortunate our community is to have a board director and assistant directors who are so thoughtful and how fortunate I personally was to work with you for five years. Best wishes, Brian Sweeney, library patron. And then there was a comment on the Facebook page, which I don't have printed out. Chris, and I don't know if you have easy access to that. We're going to take that as a public comment. You're muted.
Sorry, hold on. It's from it was posted on the agenda from Laura DeBetta. She said, I just want to express my support for continued mandatory masks. You've done a great job being safe throughout this ordeal.
All right. So that is everything, and I will check one last time. And there are no new messages for me from the public.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, let's go to the previous meeting minutes, pages two through six. Let me think of a couple of seconds. Look through those. I can ask for a motion.
Only thing I wanted to note is in that first section under the financial report, I think it would be a little clearer to say Medicare Part B premiums, because it isn't all of the Medicare premiums, so. Just I don't recall if you actually said that, Jeff, but
Okay.
You maybe did.
I think I would have. So, okay, thank you.
Make that change. Also, at the very beginning, I put 2021, so I'll make that change, I think. Let's see, that was the wrong year. Oh.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes unless there's other comments or feedback from the other board members.
Okay, thanks, Charmaine. In a second. Okay. Okay, all those in favor, our discussion, all's in favor, please signify or raise your hand. Aye. Okay, motion carries. Financial report pages seven through 15.
All right, so we're going to click over to the treasures update is for any of those who are following along at home. The treasures update updated report is right next to the board packet, and we will be going with the updated version of that for discussions, and that's what's being shared on the screen right now.
Sorry about any confusion about that, but so the revenue and expense report as of January 31st. We're tracking expenses are tracking close to 4% under budget, which is very comparable to last year at this time. We have turnover and vacancy savings and expect to be 3% to 4% under budget in salaries at year end. Library materials are currently under budget, but that will change as we incur annual charges for electronic resources that are typically paid in the second half of the year. You know, you'll note that there's there's a detailed report as well. I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything they want to discuss. We did receive a $1,000 matching contribution from Friends of the Library for the Scorch Fund. And that is reflected on page eight.
I have a question. Under income, under book sales, it says just continued. I know that we had stopped book sales during COVID during the pandemic. I didn't remember, though. Did we have a discussion where we decided to never bring it back?
Nope, we didn't. We are the so the Friends of the Library, the discards that would have traditionally gone into that little book sale underneath the stairs have been going towards the Friends of the Library semi-annual book sale instead, so that those can be a little bit more robust. Well, so they can exist, frankly. Because before that, the Friends had a catch as catch can book sales and they're, that's not fair. They they had infrequent book sales. This is providing a more steady stream of books for them to sell twice a year, and they're generating, you know, quite a bit of income and goodwill for the Friends. They're getting a lot more volunteers than they have traditionally. So that's that's where those books have gone. We can have a discussion about whether we would want to continue that, but I know the Friends are very interested in continuing that.
That's for next year's budget.
I'm sorry, what's that, Sherry?
That that's that's for next year's budget. It's being discontinued for next year's budget.
Gotcha. And Jeff, I had a question. So can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Okay, great. So when the Friends have a book sale, where does that revenue go?
All of the money goes to the Friends, which then the only place that the money goes for the Friends is back to the library. So, yep, you got it. They're the they're the nonprofit. They can fundraise because they are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) charitable organization, unlike the library, which is a government entity. We don't fundraise, the Friends can fundraise, and they use that money to generate cash resources to support lots of library programs, and they are currently saving money quite a bit. They're they're doing a good job because they would like to contribute to a larger piece of a capital project going forward. They want to be able to fundraise and and kind of contribute to the library in that way going forward.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, thanks for explaining that. I'm glad that that's where the money is going. That's good.
Yeah, you bet.
Any other questions on the financials? Treasury report or the financials?
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report and the financials as presented in this board package. I also just want to mention at this point in time, I am having a little bit of technology problems here. All I can see right now is the agenda and that side of it. I don't see people's faces and stuff, so if I'm if I seem disconnected or I'm missing something, just just call me out because I I am here participating.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see me or not.
We can't see you, Mary, but we can hear you.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, great. Any discussion? All those in favor, you can see by raise your hand and sue Mary, you're okay with the financials?
I mean, yes.
Great. Financial personnel report.
Okay.
Wait, excuse me, Jeff. So Mary, you can also use the chat if you want me to recognize you or something too. Okay.
Oh, okay, I will try.
Sure. Yeah.
Mark, Mark, are you going to monitor that?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a bunch of screens for me. So, okay, very good. For the personnel report, there are actually no requested actions. You know, we're reporting back on a few on a hire that we have, but there are no additional requested actions for this board meeting. So I'm not seeking any more permission to hire any more positions.
Did the library two, I think, position we talked about in the past?
Yep, it's still there. We are we're in process. The good news about the librarian too is that we have received permission. You know, we're all set with everybody with the one individual we already hired off the librarian to list. We're all set there. And now we are in process of interviewing for the other librarian too. That's the programming and outreach coordinator.
Great. Okay, good.
So you'll see that that's still listed as an open position on our on our page, but we did receive permission from Albany County Civil Service to pursue hiring that, and that list is once again active. So that's great news for us.
Yeah, that's good.
Jeff, how is recruiting for the library clerk positions going?
We're doing pretty good. I think, you know, we're we have filled all the positions that we're seeking to fill right now. A lot of you'll see a lot of these part-time clerk positions. There's, you know, fewer of them held open than there were in the past. We're just scaling that exactly with the with the physical checkouts as they as the we return to normalcy. We're not gonna we're not gonna jump before we need to to hire those positions because they really do manipulate the you know, the physical parts of the collection. Those are what those positions are for, either collection maintenance or circulation department. So we are we are not having significant issues hiring part-time positions right now.
I just want to say I very much appreciate the screen sharing, Jeff, although I'm not sure if it's working for Mary, but I know it's it's very helpful to have it right there for me.
Okay, I'm doing my best to scale the different widths of that, so I'll try to keep it to my screen so it looks reasonable for you. So, okay, nothing to do there. Just there it is.
Okay, great. We'll move into the directory report then.
Okay. So we'll talk about the mask mandate a little bit later. The buildings grounds, we did some some significant crane work with trees. There were three large trees that were removed from the building. You know, unfortunately, it was the Monday after the ice storm. Cranes come when cranes come. That's they don't they don't they don't move for anybody. Crane hours are expensive and they come when they can't. This should be the last of the backlog and pre-approved tree service that that we were under contract for that the board was has authorized before you. We had kind of a backup of that work and we're through that now. And so we'll be able to look forward to, you know, tending to the trees that we have and, you know, and looking at working with our garden volunteers to identify places where we might need to add a tree or two on the property. The sleet storm, I'm sure, was no surprise to anybody, sort of a once in 20 years sleet storm. Proved to be a significant challenge for the library. Even the Bobcat couldn't get through and underneath that ice. But the two of the maintenance staff, the full-time guys came in on the the Friday and poured salt everywhere, which allowed us, we were down to one maintenance staff person on Saturday, and he was with a delay able to get us clear enough to allow people into the library safely, both from the plaza and the staff side entrance. So that was that was really difficult, and that was a lot of work on the part. I just have to note it. It was just so much physical labor on their parts, and I just, you know, I want to thank them that the Bobcat did, again, great work clearing our spots of snow. So we, you know, we have access to more of our parking spots, less of it as the snow gets pushed around by the snowplow. So we're happy about that. And then the just HVAC, tiny little HVAC, the the air conditioning coil was replaced. We talked about that a couple of meetings ago, and that's that work has been completed. Everybody always wants to work on the coldest days of the year. But they completed it. It was good. We are we've had two new BT BCSD interns from the school district. We always like to see them and, you know, so when we get sometimes they continue for multiple semesters. We have two brand-new interns this semester, and we're happy to have them. Happy to have them on board. And then we have just mentioned really quickly some remote work that we are doing to transcribe some of our historical records at the library where they're either handwritten or not easily auto character recognition kit doesn't work well on the text. So we're actually transcribing them. That's not work necessarily that we would pursue first, but it is a job that can be done by most staff people, and we've had lots of need for alternative work. We're doing continuing to audit the fiction collection, just assessing for BIPOC authors and representation LGBTQ represented representation diverse religions and disability, mental health representation. So we're working on that. There are some movement for an automated service that would provide that the ability to do that a lot easier than the sort of staff staff intense audit that we've been doing recently. Turning towards summer reading, Mary met with the folks from the Town Parks Department to work on that Thursdays in the Parks Performer Series that those are getting set up again. You know, the Almat Park is big and can have a lot of people there spread out. So we're working with them again for the summer. We split that about half and half with the Town Parks Department. That's good. Those subscription boxes are going out for the teens. It's a good thing to for them to have in the winter. Lots of siblings sharing those, and and we've got some good numbers. We have 5018 signed up for that right now. The Community Sketchbook program is great. We've done some, there's been a lot of changes with Libby and our ebook platform, so we're doing some classes to help people set up their set up their devices so they can use the ebooks and the audiobooks. And then some guided meditation and then our own voices book group, which is the new name for the anti-racist book group, and that's I'm just focused on, you know, the change in name came from the the folks who were participating in the group. So that's that's been fun. Kindness Matters ran through January where we would surprise people and delight people with little surprises in their in their pickups as they came either through into the library or through curbside pickup. So so that's been fun, and thanks to the Friends of the Library for co-sponsoring that. As far as circulation is concerned, the circulation numbers look great, of course, compared to last year. We were closed in January to the public. So circulation is up huge, but you know, we're we're continuing to monitor the use patterns, compare it both to pre-pandemic numbers as well as last year's numbers. So we're we're still doing that. Automatic renewals was launched successfully. We haven't heard a lot of pushback on that. I think people's books are out there getting renewed automatically. It will continue to monitor the effects of that as we move forward. You know, as as we have a little bit more of a baseline with that service. There's some new services through Hoopla, which is one of our ebook and e-content subscribers. They're they offer these binge passes that allow people to watch a certain series of videos for a for a fixed period of time, and then we're charged only once for that for that watch. So it's just a new service, and I'm always excited. We 14 people checked those out during the month, and we didn't even advertise it. So I was like that. Lots of continuing education on part of the staff.
Hey, Jeff, can you go back to that binge pack thing? I don't understand.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, so the the binge pass is hoop. So Hoopla, which is one of our online offerings, you know, they have some different providers for videos and some of them. The great courses have always been offered like this. If you if you have a great courses, there might be seven videos in the course. But really, there's only one one circulation, one one charge for that. So now they're offering some other series type events and Curiosity Stream, I think they're partnered with it, which is a different provider that you can watch a series of videos over a fixed period of time. I wish I knew exactly what that was. Let's say it's seven days. You can watch all the videos in that series, and the library's really only hit once for that for the charge for that. This is one of those pay as you pay as you go services. But they know, I think Hoopla knows, some some items get watched in sequentially in order, so they're just
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Then we'll just go look really quickly at the statistics. You know, program attendance is up, obviously. We have, you know, we're doing in-person programming as well as hybrid and virtual programming. So that's good to see. How? What an outreach is, things that we would have classified as outreach previously is now a program. If it's done virtually, we might say it was offsite, but really the way the state's having us count things, that's a program because it's virtual. So this new world is playing havoc a little bit with the state report, which we'll talk about later, and some of these categories for how what counts as an outreach, what counts as a program. If the librarian's in the library, but they're dealing with the kids in the school, is that an outreach? We traditionally would have said that's outreach. But now it's a program. So these statistics that I report to you feed right into our New York State Annual Report, so we're we're scrambling to make sure that we put things in the appropriate categories. Again, nice increases in circulation. As we analyze a sort of physical versus digital circulation, we'll go down here to that. What we were noticing is that the the drop, one of the major drops in physical circulation over the past year and more is in media. So it's the audiobooks, which you've heard me talk about, but also DVDs. Now, some of that may be there just haven't been a lot of good DVDs put out. Absolutely true. You know, starting to come in now. We'll see if that if that demand bounces back, but the audiobook circulation is unlikely to come back. It's it's that's definitely people have voted with their feet. As far as that, that's going to be a digital a bit a digital platform service for us going forward. So really, the book circulation, the physical book circulation is doing quite well, quite quite steady. And it's some of those alternative circulation, particularly in video and audiobook where there's a softening in those circulation, but it's but a pickup in the in the video circulation. Electric use is what it is. Electricity is very expensive right now. That's what I'm going to say. So both electricity and gas are particularly pricey. So I don't like that, but but there it is. And then that is it for my director's report.
Jeff, I have a quick question. A couple of times you mentioned around programming or reporting to the state. How often do you have to do that?
So we report to the state one time, one time per year. So we have a New York State Annual Report. It goes by our fiscal year. So it was so when we're reporting to the state, which this is the report that I'll this copied all 87 pages as are down at the bottom of this packet. That's for our last fiscal year. So it's mostly the data they're looking for ended June 30th of 2021, and then we report it now. And so that's just true for all libraries, whether your fiscal year ends in December or or ends in in June like ours or any of the other months. We do that once a year. We have several reports to the state that we make. That's not our only report that we make to the state. Most of the others are financial. We report to the school district. We report to New York State Education Department. There's a Controller's Office report that we do. But as far as library statistical report, we do that one time a year, and it's now.
Have a question.
Yeah.
I can't tell if you can see me or not.
I can see I can see all of you. Yeah.
I'm just wondering, Jeff, where the library is auditing the adult fiction for diversity?
Yes.
That's great, wonderful. And I see that you're just you're we want to focus on increasing representation should we need to. I'm just wondering, what else might you would you use the information to create a search engine if a patron wanted to look for a certain item or is do you plan to do shelving of of some sort?
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to to separate things out. I have no intention to create new genres sort of beyond the genres that we have already. So very some libraries really go for massive amounts of genres. That's not my intention. I think things are better put together in in sort of functional units. That's how I'll call our current genres, but we are tagging lots of items in the catalog, and that then those tags become searchable. Now, the public can tag using Encore, but they really don't. Mostly it's but it's been a good project for, again, it's a good COVID protocol project for people to be able to tag items in catalog, and then they become searchable under those tags. So that's that's our intention.
Right, great, wonderful. And then I had one other question on the automatic renewals.
Yes.
Receiving emails when they their items are automatically renewed. They are.
Yep, there should be a courtesy renewal. So let's say everything you had on your card was renewable. Then you're going to get one courtesy notice that says, hey, we're going to renew all this stuff for you. It's or it's been renewed, you know, like that. If you have some things that are renewable and some things are not renewable yet too, you get one thing that says, here's the things that we renewed for you, and here's the things that aren't renewed. And those are separate emails just from the way the system has to work.
Okay, so they are also told the things that cannot be renewed.
Yeah, absolutely, because I think that's, you know, as the expectation becomes more that things are renewed automatically, people are going to be like, what? You know, how come my stuff wasn't renewed? That's, you know, we're not, we don't like to surprise people in as much as possible.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, great. UHS report, Lisa, I don't know if you have anything.
Just a few things to report this month. We did have a discussion at the board level about doing the racial equity training as a group, and there was a discussion in terms of what libraries are planning on doing on their own. And I know we had a discussion, a brief discussion about it. I wondered, obviously not for this meeting, but for a future meeting, I feel like we probably should circle back and make a decision about that. Do you want to, I remiss in recognizing Charmaine's contributions to Upper Hudson's training and and assistance with all of this. She's been intimately involved and very helpful to Mary and Tim as they've been putting together this stuff. I wasn't sure if everyone knew that, but so, good job. I also wanted to let you know the lobby day is scheduled for March 2nd. I think you maybe got an email about it. If you have not, I can pass on mine. And then I also wanted to let you know that one of the things, Jeff, you had talked a little bit about doing And then I also wanted to let you know that one of the things, Jeff, you had talked a little bit about doing some Libby classes. But East Green Bush has done some virtual Libby training that they videoed and have posted. And apparently people were very, it was one of their better attended classes or virtual events. So I thought, you know, why not? I'm always pushing Libby with anyone that will listen to me. So I feel like tho- those are good opportunities to get people familiar with what's out there. So that's it.
Excellent.
Great. Any questions for Lisa on that?
I, I do have a question, Lisa. I just wondered, is the lobby day, do you know, is it virtual or is it in person?
I'm pretty sure it's virtual again.
Virtual. Yep.
All right. And I think, you know, the interesting thing is there was some feedback, I don't know how much you heard, Jeff, that it maybe was more beneficial than the in-person because people didn't walk away or kind of slip out the back door or do any of those kinds of things that often happens at those events. So, you know, that's one of those silver linings of virtual. So, but yes, virtual again.
And there is just on that lobby day, you know, for now, we are still in the same Assembly District. But next year, it looks like we'll be moved, you know, northern part of Beth, the town of Bethlehem, which is where we are, the building is anyway, will be moved to a different Assembly District. So we'll talk about that as that gets closer.
Yeah, for a different congressional district as well.
I'd say thanks for the shout out. This is really, I've been just working and providing some resources, having some discussions. And it's been very stimulating and I appreciate the efforts of Upper Hudson to work with all different kinds of libraries on the goals that each library sets for itself. But thanks, Lisa.
Great. Any other questions for Lisa? Okay, going into new business. So we have a bunch of new business today. The first order being the Personnel Committee Recommendations, page twenty-four and twenty-five. Charmaine, you want to take that or you want me to take that?
Um, either one of us is fine. I think we met and given just recommendations and some discussions with him, identified two positions and together crafted these draft job, not only job descriptions, but just basically bullets of what each position would be generally responsible for. And we would felt comfortable enough after two working sessions to bring this to the board. I don't know if Mark or Jeff want to add, we noticed that the volunteer position was specifically identified in Long Range Plan as a need and a desire to add to the position. And the Administrative Assistant is to assist all members of the library staff, in particular the Director and the Board of Trustees in terms of managing information and several other administrative projects. But I'll say that in general and I'll leave it to Mark or Jeff to, to add.
Yeah, I just want to add that we've been talking about the Volunteer Supported Employment Coordinator for a couple of years. So I think it's, now's the time to, to move forward with that. And the Administrative Assistant position, you know, obviously, I think is, is a valid request as well.
And, and I think the volunteer, it's volunteer and support employment, supported employment coordinator. So sometimes when we say volunteer, people will just think, be thinking about programs or, or managing volunteers. But there's a significant portion of that position that would work with different staff members of the library and coordinating with other community partners to both attract and supervise and retain employees. And then the, the Administrative Coordinator position, we thought was particularly needed because of the anticipated major construction project perhaps that is, is going forth. And I know that the Building Committee will be talking a bit about an update on the architectural interviews, et cetera. But we realize that there's a significant amount of contact, reach out, coordination and communication that is going to be involved with any major project as well as other areas.
Great. Any questions on those positions or their committee?
Those are both full-time positions?
Yes.
Again, those aren't formal job descriptions. I mean, that will be developed later, but it gives you a taste or a flavor for the responsibilities and therefore the need for the positions.
So just really quickly, I worked with Sherry to identify our estimated cost for salary and benefits to come up with those. And that, you know, we took the liberty of including those in the draft budget that's coming up. But we wanted to, the, the sort of the, it's hard to decide which order we're going, this is, or we're going to start with this. And then we'll talk about the draft budget a little bit later.
Yeah.
So Jeff, the, both positions, I mean, obviously Administrative Assistant is a fairly common civil service title. But the outreach positions, would they, would they be civil service or would they be something outside of it?
This is under discussion. We were, we're in discussion with civil service right now. The Administrative Assistant or Confidential Secretary, they have several titles. This is not an unusual position even among the local libraries. So we, you know, we, we asked other local libraries if this is sort of common and it turns out to be extremely common. So, so there's several titles that they can base that on. There'll be discussion if it's, if, you know, Confidential Secretary, that would be, their request would be that, for that not to be in the union. The other position, we had some, we had a brief conversation with the folks at Civil Service and they don't believe that they have a title that fits this. So they would have to create, you know, they said, it's no big deal. They created a new title, they created a new test. And that, that could be created for that position relatively simply. They said they had another volunteer coordinator, but I think it was, it didn't fit what we were talking about here and was specifically for the BOSsies.
Yeah, and just, I'm, I'm strongly urging that, that we don't, don't wait for civil service, that we hire a position outside the civil service system. Obviously, you know, we have to do that within the legal bounds, but, but I think, you know, we need to get going on stuff. And then if it can be folded in down the road, that's fine. But it's my opinion that we should do, don't wait for a test and.
Well, yeah, and if they were, if there, if there is no test and they're creating the job, then we could hire provisionally. And then the test would come later. So that's, that's a process that they, they have.
And around the administrative position, we felt strongly it should be confidential because it will be also supporting the board, which could involve employee issues and the preparation of documents that would be things that we might handle in executive session. So that's why that position is labeled as a confidential. We, we don't have the title on there, but it would be a confidential position outside of the union.
Okay, any other questions on that?
Or, or if people want to carry over this discussion to discussion of the budget perhaps, because they do overlap. This is obviously has an impact on the budget, so.
Yeah, this item and the next item, I think, are all, will have budget implications. So we try to make sure that, you know, we reported as the committee that, that supports these two positions. Okay, I don't think we need a motion or anything. I think it'll be part of the budget discussion. Okay. Okay, so here are no questions. Going to the fine committee. There's a minutes in the, in the packet for the fine committee that basically talked about the discussion. Discussion was pretty robust. I think there's, I would report that there's probably a differing, difference of opinion on fines. But it was, I think it was a good, good discussion. And there was not a recommendation forwarded from that committee. But I, you know, we're, we're the one to talk about the sorted issues with fines. And, and I leave it to other members that were there to fill in. That was just my, off the top of my head report. So. Anyone else want to follow up on that?
I don't think in terms of the discussion, but my question, and maybe it's premature, if people want to chime in about the meetings, is where do we go from here? And what's the next step? And I have a next step that I would offer, but I also just, that's, that's what's on my head. As we've had a couple of meetings on the fine committee, it was very hard to get the second one scheduled, so it took a lot of time. I think there were a lot of great, a lot of exchange, but what I asked the board is, what's next? We, we did not come up with a, a recommendation or a MS recommendation either way.
Right. So I think, you know, the board, as I said at the meeting, that, you know, the, the table is, you know, the agenda is always open for motion. We've been talking about this literally for years. So, you know, if people want to move a motion, that'd be fine. I think, you know, I, I think that people have differing opinions and I'm not sure more discussion is going to change anyone's mind in some ways. So.
Well, I, I have, you know, like, as everyone said, we've had a lot of discussions. And I've heard around the table, so to speak, that fines restrict access to the economically disadvantaged and that other libraries have to, or they've decided to forego fines. So why shouldn't we? And that money is collected from fines aren't integral to our budget. And I know that I view this issue differently than the majority of my other board members. And so for the purposes of meeting minutes, I just want to reiterate why. I don't agree with the premise that fines restrict access. No one is required to incur a fine. First and foremost, I'm very sensitive just to stories that have been shared with us about difficulties in the far past in returning materials on time and with the way libraries used to be. But today, in this day and age, I think Bethlehem Public Library makes it easier than it has ever been to avoid fines with emailed reminders before due dates and the ability to renew materials on, online. And recently with the institution of automatic renewals. So now even access to a computer is no longer an issue because your items are renewed for you. So even if you're in a family without a computer in the home, items are renewed for you and most items for up to three months. Because we're members of UHLS, patrons can return materials to any library system. So even if you're a family without a car, relying on bus schedules, three months is plenty of time to return an item to the library closest to you. And if it's after hours, there are night drop slots. In effect, I really think it has never been easier in the history of libraries to return a book on time. With regard to the issue that fines are not integral to our budget, clearly with the greater ease of returning materials, it's going to lead to fewer fines collected. I, you know, we know those numbers are going down. But what does not decrease is the cost to house our collections, to staff the library, to maintain services to the public. And these costs continue to rise. And I, I just can't in good faith, as a steward of taxpayer money, agree to forego part of our budget when library costs continue to rise, especially when I want our community to continue to have great programs and the newest materials. The thought that other libraries have already eliminated fines and we should too. It simply brings me to the thought that each community is different and we always have choices. It, it could be easier just to follow along with everyone else, but that doesn't always mean it's the right thing to do. We still have a fiduciary responsibility to maintain services, not forego revenue. I believe everyone around this table carries a strong conviction that libraries matter, that access to libraries are important for literacy and culture and creativity and community renewal. Every patron of our library though, regardless of their personal situation in life, ha- already has full access to our entire catalog, access to our full calendar of programs, full access to our learned and knowledgeable librarians. But it's, it's taxpayer money that enables this library to exist. And we must, again, I'm going to say the same thing, be responsible stewards of that money. And the library had collected some data and they gave it to us a month or a couple of months ago. In the year twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, which was the last full year before the pandemic, our fine revenue was over thirty-five thousand dollars. And that's on page fourteen of the Fine Free Binder, if anyone wants to look it up. Throughout the pandemic, our fine revenue is down to four thousand dollars. This is a vast disparity in numbers. And until we resume a hundred percent normal operations, we cannot know what future fine revenue will be or what type of impact it has, really. The data shows that fewer items were returned during the pandemic, even though most were returned within three days or three days late. But that data was based on borrowing that was a fraction of our normal. The pandemic significantly affects library operations at a minimum. I don't think we should make any large policy changes while we're still in the grip of this virus. That's all the notes that I have.
Thanks, Michelle.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments, Carolyn?
I make a motion.
Okay.
Put it to a vote.
Okay, so what specifically is the motion? So we have for the record.
I make a motion to put it to a board vote whether to, whether the Bethlehem Public Library should eliminate fines for patrons on a date to be set.
And just to clarify, you mean fines across the board for everything?
Yes.
But that does not include replacement cost from items that are lost?
Yes, thank you for that clarification, Charmaine.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, Charmaine's second. Okay, any further discussion on the motion?
I, I won't say about the motion, but I, I respect Michelle, what she supported and I respect, even though people may differ. I believe that we had a hearty, and as you said, Mark, kind of, I don't think he used the word vibrant, but lively discussion. And I respect the views of all of the trustees. And I believe that everyone has thought about this for quite a long time.
Okay, any other trustee want to speak on the motion or just have questions or discussion on the motion?
One other item to capture for the minutes, I think, is that the cost of collecting fines, right? As we've discussed multiple times over the years, is, is very much non-zero, right? It's a significant burden, right, for the library to be dealing in cash, right? And, and revenue, right, which is something completely outside of their normal scope. So whatever money we are collecting via fines, right, is being offset by that extra expense, right, in time away from, from core duty.
Okay, thank you.
I would just point out though, that there will still be some financial dealings with lost items, damaged items. And, and those items actually contribute a lot to what people are considering restrictive access as well. And that, that's not going away with taking away fines.
Okay, any other trustee want to speak on this? Okay, I, I'm going to take a shot at it. So I'm, I'm opposed to the motion, just for the record. We'll vote in opposition and my, you know, I think we're just pushing costs to, you know, that, that we don't have to push on to the general taxpayer. You know, I've been thinking about this for a number of years. I don't think, you know, I'm not, I'm not convinced by the data that was presented and I don't think that's an issue, access issue in our community. And I do think that, so that's, that's my position on it. I do think that we shouldn't be giving up revenue just for, for this cause. Okay, any other position, any other talks? Okay, we'll call to a motion, to a vote.
Can I just clarify? So if someone says yay to the motion, they're, they're voting to eliminate fines and a nay vote says voting against eliminating fines. I just want to make sure that people understand the, the yay and the nay part.
Right, and the, and the date to be set down the road is what the, what the motion is. So it's not an immediate effective date. So, okay, so all those in favor?
And I just wanted to note with some additional discussions, and that is something we did talk about at, at the committee level, about perhaps looking at some of our policies regarding, you know, when things are lost and to reflect or realign timeframes as are reasonable.
Yeah, I think if the motion passes, we'll have to do an implementation discussion, absolutely. And I, you know, I think the board should be part of that, at least with the set, obviously with the staff, but if, if the motion does carry. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I just have another question. So if we go through with this motion, this is a motion to make a change soon, presumably, right? Not, not waiting until we're back to normal operations.
I will, I will amend the motion. I, I amend the motion to say that this is a vote whether or not to eliminate fines at a date to be set in the future. However, that date should be no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so that, so a, a, a yes vote is to, to support the motion, to, to take away fines dates, date sometime this year, this calendar year. No vote is to, obviously to not support that. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion? Maybe we should just by raising your hand, so Chris can get the notes. So I have Charmaine, Harmit, Caroline and Lisa. All those, all those opposed, just raise your hand. I have Mark, Michelle and Mary. Okay, so motion carries. Okay, great, thanks, everyone. And we, I think we should do a implementation discussion at some point. You know, next board meeting or at some other venue.
Very much so.
Okay, I was, I was gonna suggest that maybe at the, and the next agenda, whether it's open business, whatever, is the discussion of the timeframe. Otherwise, it'll get away from us and it does have some budgetary implications depending on when it goes into place. So people should come maybe prepared with some ideas and have that discussion. Whether it goes to a vote or not, I'm not sure, but let's, I'm going to just suggest it goes on the agenda for timeline and then the process, maybe Jeff can get some ideas on how that all could work, but we could at least have a discussion of the timeframe.
I would totally agree. I think there's also, there's a rollout, the public relations aspect, though, and a rollout of it too, that we should probably talk about the next board meeting. I mean, I know you guys have been thinking about it for a while, but we should have a, you know, talking points and a rollout when this.
Yes.
I would, I would also suggest that once we have a date or an implementation plan, that there is significant efforts to communicate this to the public and communicate the reasons behind it to the public. And I think we can talk about that as part of an implementation plan, not just through the library website, but perhaps, you know, a board letter to the spotlight or, or something along those lines.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I think there's got to be a rollout plan that's in a series of talking points that we all have and it's, it's a communicated, consistent way, maybe outside, you know, just through our current channels.
Yeah, we'll be meeting on our side. There's a lot of, we have a lot of examples of these and how they can go sideways quickly and cause a lot of extra work for the staff of the implementation. So we'll be talking with Catherine and the rest of our, the rest of our staff about that.
Okay, great, thanks, everyone. Long discussion on this, this issue.
Thanks to everyone who engaged on that. I just wanted to say that.
Sure, yeah, it was great. We're moving on to the draft budget presentation on page twenty six.
Okay, so remember, we're not going to be on page twenty six. We're going to be on the other document with, no, it's okay. Which I'm sharing out now and for anybody who's playing along at home, it's available on the Board of Trustees website at the library, right next to the board packet. Is the Treasury Board and this amended draft proposed budget.
So you're going to have to make it a little bit bigger, sorry.
Okay.
That's possible.
Get back up there.
It's very much bigger than the handout, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, I will try to, is that better? Okay.
Yeah.
I don't want to shove the, I, I can shove the, you know what, we shoved the notes off the side of the screen, give me a second. Because we talk about notes later on, as we talk about how we're talking about that with the public. Talk about talking, that doesn't make any sense. Sorry, there we go, okay.
Okay, so this budget includes the two new positions that we talked about. It includes the salary increase based on the contract that was negotiated last year. It also includes an increase for pages, the wage, the minimum wage for pages. And there is some money in here for fines, which we can deal with, I'm sure, in order to, to balance the budget. We're looking at about a hundred and thirty one thousand dollar increase over last year over the levy or about a three point one percent increase. This, the large increase is due to the fact that we didn't use the full levy last year, so we have more available to us this year. So just going, I, I'll go through and kind of hit some highlights and then, you know, certainly any questions that anybody has, we can, we can discuss. So under salaries and benefits, as I said, and it includes two new positions. It also includes a three and a half percent turnover allowance, which seems to be holding pretty well true based on last year. And there is an increase for health insurance. We, ten percent increase.
Sherry, there's a question.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Can you clarify that turnover allowance? That, that's on the assumption that
Yep.
Is replaced.
Due to the fact that every position is listed within the budget and there are some, there are some vacancies during the year. Sometimes we, you know, we may, might make hires partway through the year. So we have some savings in that position, although we budget for the position for the full year. And then we also, there, there's turnover during the year. Sometimes employees leave, creating a vacancy. And it may take a few months to fill that vacancy. So we have some savings. There's a lot of play in in salaries due to the movement of employees. Based on, we looked at this last year and based on history over the past five years, we felt comfortable using a three and a half percent turnover rate. Because that seemed to be, it, it's pretty conservative. We actually have more savings than that, or we have had in the past. But I'd rather be conservative and not come up short. It's an attempt to more accurately budget salaries. We don't want to just budget, you know, we have X number of positions, we know what the salaries are, are, we don't want to just budget that number because there's turnover and there's a lot of movement during the year.
Gotcha. Is that three and a half percent? Is three and a half percent of the total librarian salary line item?
Yes.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Health insurance has increased as well. We have, we have, we, we have a couple of known new enrollments, plus we'll have these two new positions. We're not exactly sure whether they'll take health insurance, but we picked up one anyways as additional cost. And again, if we move forward with these two positions, we don't know exactly when they'll be hired. They may not be hired as of July first. They could be hired August first, September first, you know, it might take a little while to get them on board. So we'll have a little bit of savings in there too. It'll, you know, we may only reflect ten months worth of salary rather than twelve, but we budgeted for the full twelve.
Sherry. Hmm. Um, where in the budget, we, do we? I believe we incur an expense for some health insurance costs for retirees.
That's included in the health insurance line.
In the health insurance line, okay. Do, can you give me an overview of what we pay for, for retirees? Is it a select number of retirees? Are we paying right now for maybe fifty people, for five people, for two hundred and fifty, what?
No, it's not that many. Tanya probably knows better than I do, but it's, it's a handful, like maybe six or eight people. Does that sound about right, Tanya?
Well, that's six or eight people who get the partial Medicare Part B reimbursement. There is a retirement plan, health insurance where and
Tracy.
I think Tracy would know.
She's here, yeah.
Would know the exact number of retirees that we have on it, but roughly we pay, I would guess between seven and eight thousand dollars a month for those retirees. They don't get the Medicare reimbursement per se, but they are on our health plan. They contribute a small portion, but we cover a bigger portion of it. And it all depends on when they retired and what was in that contract the year that they retired. Am I correct in that, Jeff?
But, yeah, Tracy's got it right there. She, she's queued up, so I'm gonna let her, let her go. Tracy?
Yeah, we have, we have several retirees. A few of them, we do pay one hundred percent of their Medicare premium. Some of them, we pay both the premium and Part B. Some we just pay eighty percent of their premium. It's, it's a mixed bag. It depends upon when they retire, their age, if they're on our group health plan or the Medicare plan. And again, depending upon that contract many, many years ago, we may be paying the Part B premium.
So Tracy, can you tell me about how many folks we have on our M A P D, the Medicare Advantage Plan for retirees mostly?
I'm going to say about fifteen.
Yeah, that seems right to me as well. Then another.
And we have two on a group plan.
Yeah, so people who are not yet eligible for Medicare are on our group plan, even if they're retired. If they're retired under the Medicare eligible age, then we'll have just a couple of those at any time.
All right, that's, that's very helpful and I have one follow-up question. So we're putting, we have a health insurance line, a proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year of three hundred and sixty four thousand and change. Real ballpark, maybe eighty or a hundred thousand of that relates to retirees?
I have eighty five seven.
Yeah, right in there.
Okay, okay, that's, that's just helpful to kind of know that ballpark number, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. The library materials budget, most notably, there's a request for a forty thousand dollar increase for e-collections. There's, there has been an increase in our consortium fee of five percent, that's part of it, but the use of e-collections has become very popular and the costs, you know, have been, are reflected here.
So in the past year, of the years of the pandemic, we shifted funds from the physical collections as physical media were going out less and shifted that to e-content. We talked about that here with the trustees. This is, this request for the budget is just a recognition of the piece of that that's not likely to go back to where it was before.
Right. You can see we spent, I just let me, I just wanted to comment that we spent two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars last year. So this is reflect, reflective of some of that.
Thank you. I just want to clarify as well, some are all of these services on this line, especially the new stuff that we implemented, you know, to, to help people during the pandemic. Some of this, the the, the actual benefit is only available to Bethlehem patrons, correct?
Correct, yes, there, the, in, in a couple of ways. So things like Canopy, which is downloadable video, Hoopla, which is video and ebooks and audiobooks. Those are available, are, we are paying only for, for the availability for that, for Bethlehem cardholders. In addition, the item, many of the items that we buy through Overdrive, which is that Libby, that, that large content provider that we have, those items go to our patrons first. And then after those holds are filled for Bethlehem patrons, they are then available to the rest of the consortium after that. So, so on almost all of our significant e-platforms, there is either a priority or an exclusivity for Bethlehem cardholders.
Okay, so when we just, when we are putting this in the budget and somebody is, you know, I'm asking, but I'm pretty sure the answer, we've looked at it, we see the kind of volume that this service is, is providing and, and we can see that the people in the town would presumably want to continue this, am I correct?
Yes, and, and especially.
Over stamping it, you know.
No, and the thing with Hoopla and Canopy, those, with their alternatives to Overdrive and Libby, those are driven on a use, a cost per use basis. So we pay for exactly the use that our patrons are using. So in the beginning, that was very scary. We weren't sure the number's going to be all over the place. As it turns out, on the average, people behave in about the same way and they're actually very stable. We know exactly what those are. We know very close to what those are going to be each month. So there, it's not a wildly unstable number. But, you know, in the, in the whole, but what we're paying per use. So, yeah, we, you know, that, that's, that's the nice part about those models is that the use that people are getting, they're, they're, we're only paying for that, we're not paying for extra content that's not being used. And traditional databases are more likely. For instance, if we pay for Consumer Reports and then nobody ever uses it, or ancestry dot com and no one ever uses it, which is not the case. But if no one ever used them, we're on the hook for the subscription fee for those two services. We're, we're not, we pay for the use that people are using.
Okay.
But absolutely very popular, you know, there's massive gains across all the e-collections, but particularly in certain collections. Significant gains and, you know, and, and we did put Canopy and Hoopla in specifically in reaction to the pandemic. But the, that's, that use isn't going away and I think those services are, are very much appreciated by the public.
Thank you. I appreciate them.
Okay, under operations, just a couple of things I'd like to point out. We're looking at probably a fifteen thousand dollar increase in electricity and gas due to the increased cost. And the other item that I want to point out is that we're asking for a one-time cost of fifteen thousand dollars to accounting services for an upgrade to the timepiece for hourly employees. This would just be a, a one-time fee and would enable us to process and have supervisors approve time remotely.
And definitely more closely integrate with our payroll system.
Right, right. And under income, there's not much of a change. I did drop an estimate of fines by five thousand, just to, just to see how the numbers were going to work out. And if we have to go back and make changes there, we can. As you can see, there's about almost fifty thousand dollars of the limit that is left on the table, so we could use that if we had to. Does anybody have any, any other questions?
Yeah, Sherry, I had a question, but back on audio, children's audiobooks. You know, I saw the, on the other material that we have, like no one, it was zero this month or last month. And so I mean, are, are, is that, is that just, that's just a collection that people don't use at all?
Uh, let me click over here, hold on. Oh, I'm lost, here we go. It's the Young Adult Magazines and the Children's Magazines, those are, those are really obligated to continue to report them because we're supposed to report them and there's, you know, some historical use. Next year, when we roll into the next fiscal year, I won't even be reporting Young Adult Magazines. Or, and I'll, I'll roll any children's magazines, I'll just roll for this, the purposes of this report. I'll just roll into the main, there's just, there's so little circulation of those formats, even frankly digitally, it's just not. Because people don't enjoy highlights for children as much as I did when I was a kid.
That's dating all of us here.
I'm sorry, Love Ranger Rick.
Ranger Rick, that's right, yeah. So the audiobooks, you're, you're going to just decrease by two thousand, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, it's just, that's just recognition of that, that physical circulation and then the expense of children's audiobooks moves to the e-content line. So just everything gets purchased and, you know, probably someday we'll have to have a fracture of categories as we, eh, whatever, but.
Right.
And then the special collections line, that decreased strictly for the addition of new library of things, items?
You got it.
Maintenance, that was already there.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we do replace, so sometimes it's a new version of something that just wore out, you know, so that would, that would be in that same line, but it's not the sort of the if there's bits and bobs, we have to rehash or any staff time, that's not in there, but it's just, it's just the new purchases. And there's still some kinds of library of things, items that we're not buying, things that touch people's faces, goggles and microphones and all this stuff that we're still a little area bringing back. So we felt comfortable dropping that down a little bit. It's not.
I have a question. Shari, using the numerical codes, which I realize are on the far end and left, I'm just trying to orient myself here. Where is the fifteen, one-time fifteen dollar, fifteen thousand dollar increase? What number is that under?
That number is under accounting services, it's four eighty two.
Oh, so it's on another page, okay, that's right. I was trying to figure out where it was. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, just couldn't fit this all on one page, you know.
The other question I was going to ask is, is, you know, something I've asked every year, the percentage of the budget that's spent on collections, we've tried to get to fifteen percent as the, the gold standard, national threshold or whatever, but how are we doing on that?
Percentage of materials?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, for, for the, for this proposed budget, it's thirteen point six percent.
Okay.
So we're, we're inching up.
Great.
And I will mention that, um, we have a current fund balance of three point seven million dollars. Of this amount, approximately one point four million needs to be, um, set aside to fund operations for the first quarter of the, uh, of the fiscal year uh, until we start collecting tax revenue.
Yeah, so, um, maybe we could do, Jeff, I don't know if we could have staff do a chart of the last number of years on that percentage of materials, because I think.
Oh, sure, I could do that.
There's some growth over at least the last five years or more, so. It'd be a nice.
Your bet.
I have some questions just about the overall levy, but I want to wait on that in case other trustees are, have questions about lines or specific items.
Uh, one other question, the contingency item under expenses. Uh, Sheri, it looks like we've, I guess sharpened the pencil a bit on a lot of our individual line items with regards to salaries, right? The three and a half percent you mentioned and some other items. Are we comfortable keeping that contingency item the same as it's always been when those accounts were remaining, maybe not quite as lean? Or should that contingency item go, go up a little to compensate just for the unexpected?
Um, we, we've given that a little bit of thought. Um, there, there is some play there. We could, if, if the trustees decided to increase it a little bit. Um, I think a, a pretty good, um, measure for what the contingency could be is somewhere between maybe three quarters to one percent of the overall budget. And we're at about, um, a little bit more than three quarters of a percent, I think. We're not quite at one percent.
Harme, this is Mary. Um, when we, I actually raised the same question when we were in the finance committee. I said, wow, a four million dollar budget, that contingency number looks low. But at the same time, we are looking at a surplus that we have available to us that, um, mitigates the, um, you know, any, in my mind, mitigates the need to increase the contingency. Okay, that's the kind of reason that we have a surplus there to help us out if we have a, an unforeseen catastrophe. So I'm comfortable leaving the contingency where it is.
Okay, yeah, it sounds like you guys have spent some time looking at it at least, so it wasn't, wasn't overlooked. I'm good.
Other questions or, um, comments on the lines? I've seen, um, people have to take a look at this, you know, more carefully, get some time.
I think I would like, just like to mention, it's kind of sort of related to this budget, but when Sherry talks about the, um, fifteen thousand dollar one-time expense for accounting services, I would, I would like to give Sherry a shout out that she and Tanya have been working on a lot of things over the last year to look at how we do things and how we can improve things. I think this, um, should, would not, should not surprise the trustees in the next year, two, three, if Sherry and Tanya come up with some other bites at the apple to improve services. Thing, these types of accounting things haven't been updated in a long time. Um, and I want to thank Sherry and, um, Tanya for looking into this and recommending it. So it, it may just the beginning of things to come, but there are improvements. So thank you, Sherry.
Okay, so Arman, you had some questions on the levy, you said?
Um, I think Sheri, when you started off, you made a quick comment, something about la- the levy last year and the impact on this year. Could you just either restate that or say that in a different way? Uh, there was something about last year's levy and this year's levy, and I want to make sure both I understand it and public.
Sure. Uh, last year, we, we did not increase the levy. We did not use, you know, we left money on the table. We, our levy was equal to the prior year. We, you know, the levy increase was zero. Uh, this year, the New York State, the levy limit is, as you can see, oh, it's almost four point four million. Because we didn't utilize the levy for, the increase in the levy from last year, we have that extra, those extra funds if, if we utilize some of this levy this year. You know, rather than having, I mean, I think the levy went up about two percent, right, Jeff? Was that about right?
So.
So instead of having two percent available to us, we have three point one percent available to us because we, we didn't utilize funds last year.
Right, so when we.
Yeah, the way, the, the way the tax cap works, it doesn't penalize you for having a zero levy, right? Is that, that's another way to say it?
Right, you get to roll it forward. Uh, and there's, there's basically three pieces of that. There's the levy limit, because inflation's so high this year, it's the full two percent.
Right.
There's, uh, some of it is allowed to be rolled over from the previous year. And then the third factor of this for us, and there's a lot of other factors that apply to pieces of government that aren't us. The last factor that's, that's, uh, material for us is that there is a, what's called the tax-based growth factor, which is the, how much did the value of the school district increase over the past year? And there's a, there's a growth factor in that as well. So this is all about the cap, sorry.
Yeah, and just for, in terms of vocabulary, Sheri, the levy is the total amount that is, could be, um, collected. Is that, that's correct? Is that, that's the word that we're using, the word levy a lot, but I'm not sure if people understand. So it's the, for example, the four thousand, no, four million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and sixty, that's the levy from last year. And then the levy for this year is, the levy means the amount to be collected.
Yes, that's right.
As opposed to rates, which some people might, I mean, it might be unclear. Okay, thank you.
Right, and yes, to, 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 um, take that a step further, I want to be sure, like, when we see the four million, four fifty-two, and we say, that's our levy. That is not a levy. That is a cap.
Yes.
A limit.
Right.
A, a number limit that we could draw to. The actual levy last year that the taxpayers approved based on our request was four million, one seventy-two. We will be going back to the taxpayers and asking for another levy this year, which could be as high as four million, four fifty-two, but I don't think it's going to be that high. Correct, Jeff?
That's, that's correct. And the, the, no part of this budget, you know, so the, the le- the levy limit is right here on this document. The levy limit this year for us is four million, three fifty-three, six forty.
Okay.
And then the gray line above that, uh, in this proposed bud, this current budget, and obviously there's some adjustment just from tonight from our discussion. Um, but that, that budget number is four million, three oh four. So the difference between the four million, three oh four to the four million, three fifty-three, that's how far under the cap we are.
It's the cap as opposed to the levy. Yes, we have to be sure we're, we're, we distinguish between the cap and the levy because the levy is what the taxpayers give us the authority to do each year.
Yes.
Right. And, and I think because so many people hear the two percent cap, it may be, you know, just in whatever, whatever's adopted by the board, then just gets set upward for the taxpayers. I think it'd be important for the, your, um, kind of a, I won't say media people, but the public relations people to indicate, you know, what, for example, if this is adopted, I'm not sure it will be, but without further discussion, that we're actually under the cap because the cap is whatever, and the, and the levy based on a cap is four million, three, five, three plus. And we're actually asking for something that's under the amount that we would collect if we went to the full amount of the cap.
I, I'll change the wording on the bottom of this, so it's clearer.
It's.
Thank you, Sherry.
It's, it's clear. I mean, yeah.
Well, maybe it makes, you know, it makes more sense to say unused cap rather than unused levy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could say that. Or mount below the cap or something. I mean, this stuff is so like, you know, it's, uh, and then explain the difference between the school district and the library. It's a little different.
Right.
I mean, so, I mean, the, the important thing, the, the principle here though, is that the, the budget that's presented here funds, you know, no layoffs, full staff, adding up to staff. Um, it funds what we think is a reasonable allocation for materials, thirteen point six percent of the total, the total, uh, budget. You know, and it funds like the continued operation of, of, uh, of the library. I mean, that's the principle that we have, you know, robust library moving forward, um, and that, uh, you know, the, that, you know, that, I think that's the principles here that we have to concentrate on.
Right.
I don't know if there's any other questions or, uh, comments. I mean, obviously, people should take time and look carefully through this. We have to pass it at the next, at the, the next board meeting in order to meet our timelines, but, um, you know, if there's questions in the interim, you know, obviously the finance committee, um, can take, can, can be involved or not. And, uh, you know, we can talk, talk, um, or ask questions through email, except to, to need more information.
I just asked a question about the fine thing. So if during the discussion, whether it's at the next more meeting, the following, whatever, that, uh, it somehow affects the amount of the revenue that's good, that's reflected in this version of the budget for the library next year, I would imagine that any change in that could be just made up for based on either the fund balance or somewhere else. I assume that the amount is not such that we have to decide that issue before the budget is adopted. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think it, it would be prudent to put in whatever we decide is a reasonable estimate for fines. If we don't implement, um, the new policy until, let's say, December thirty-first, then we've got, you know, half the year uh, where we are collecting fines. So maybe a reasonable estimate for half the year would be five thousand instead of ten thousand. If we think we're going to be implementing the new policy sooner than that, uh, that maybe we need to take the whole ten thousand out. Um, I think that's something that we'll have to talk about a little bit. Um, I, I think, you know, it would be reasonable to put in five thousand. And if we implement the policy sooner than December thirty-first, so we'll be a little under that five thousand. We're probably going to be, oh, you know, under, you know, some other expenses. We might be over in some other income. There's always, um, you know, ebb and flow within the budget. We never come out exactly where we budgeted, right? Um, so I think, I think we'd be okay if, you know, we put in a reasonable estimate. I guess the question is, what is that reasonable estimate?
Well, also too, your estimate is based on very low numbers that are due, well, to a variety of factors, but the largest one is the fact that we are still in this pandemic and circulation is way below normal. Um, so these numbers of five and ten thousand are just, are so much lower than what they were before the pandemic.
Right, right.
Oh, but those numbers are also, the thirty thousand dollar numbers also before all of the automatic renewals.
Right.
Right, and then text updates to prevent overdoses were implemented as well. So we know those policies were driving that number down. There is no scenario where fines return to that twenty eighteen number.
Right.
And I think, uh, you know, an additional thing that we just need to be mindful of is that the, the shift to e-collections, which was already on track to happen, um, and then was, uh, really ramped up during the pandemic and continues to be ramped up during the pandemic. Um, and I don't know how that snaps back after, you know, post-pandemic, but those items aren't loseable. There's no fines on them. They're not damageable. So that was already, uh, a drop in revenue for fines was inevitable, just as the shift to electronic materials was happening. So, um, that's all, just, it's important. It's an important factor of that. It's, it's a non-significant, not insignificant portion of that.
Yeah, any other questions, uh, for the meeting or any other comments or detailed questions on, you know, particular lines?
I'm, I'm just going to suggest that the, the staff maybe do some, some reflection and discussion. And, um, if you feel like, I don't know what it's listed as, ten thousand now, is it, um, if that number should be changed in the next budget, then you just present it at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. We'll do that.
Okay, great. Thanks, everyone. I think I would ask you, take some time with this document, really look at it and, um, see if it reflects the principles, uh, to want to, uh, move forward with, uh, with this budget will be, um, we have to vote at the next meeting, so it'll be on the agenda for next meeting. Right, that, so the time.
Absolutely. Yes. In order to make the school districts timeline, we have to have an approved budget by the trustees next month, whatever that is, so that I can get it to the school district on time.
Yeah, and if, if anyone's watching the meeting, I would ask them to weigh in too as well, through the public. On this. Okay.
And thanks, thank you for the people that presented that and put it together. It's a lot of work every year.
Yeah, no, I, I want to echo that. Yeah, thanks, uh, to the, to, uh, the people who did that. Thanks very much. Um, the annual library report, Jeff, this.
Okay, this thing, uh, okay, so here we go. Uh, we rolled out, okay, so it starts on page twenty-eight. This is a New York State annual report to libraries. Uh, it needs to be voted on by the trustees. Uh, we've gone through it. There's still, there's like a concurrent um, uh, error check at the upwards and library system where all the libraries submit the report to them. And then we talk about statistics and we decide how we cut up programs into asynchronous and virtual and synchronous, and they change the definitions on us. Uh, but I'm not going to complain about that. Stop myself. Um, so this, I, I need your, uh, vote and approval on that. Here's the report. I, you know, I don't know what to tell you. Um, there's a lot of information. There's a, it's a fiscal report as well as a statistical report um, of the operations of the library. You post this, uh, after it gets accepted by the New York State Division Library Development. We post it to the, to the library website. I think it's an important historical document of, um, of the library's operations during the year.
Is there anything in the report we should be worried, I guess, worried about, I would say?
There's nothing, there's nothing really to be worried about, because so far in the past, uh, this is, you know, this is what ended in, in, in last year. So, so in some ways, um, the emergence from the pandemic isn't represented in this report. This is all last summer where we were just beginning to see some hints, uh, some glimmers, right? So this was this year, just the way our fiscal year falls, is the real pandemic year. This is mid twenty twenty to mid twenty twenty-one. Like you want the center of the nightmare, there it is, represented in statistics. Um, you know, so, uh.
So it's July one, twenty twenty?
Twenty.
Thirty, twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one, right. So, uh, you know, there's some circulation numbers in there that tie back to the circulation numbers that I report to you each month. A lot of those numbers dump straight from that report into this. They like, I'm not going to complain about that. Categories change every year. So some things, when we collect them, like right now, there's some new categories. But unfortunately, we're six months into the year that we have to report on next year. So we're scrambling to try to recut, uh, some of the, some of the categories that we've collected, um, from July one till now for, particularly with programs. So it's always a little bit of a challenge, but I think our staff are up to it. They're, they're smart and clever people, and I think they know, uh, sometimes where some of these questions are going. There are certainly lots of COVID-specific questions about open hours in here. They recognized, um, you know, the, the curbside pickup and the limited browsing hours and all of that stuff is reflected, um, in this report, uh, circuit, certainly physical, uh, circulation. I think that was when Catherine and I were talking about circulation numbers, we looked back at that, that drop in video circulation, particularly in this year, that's represented in this report. Oof, um, you know, just that, that, you know, we pick it up electronically because this forces us to, to, to separate out electronic and, um, and physical circulation in a way that I don't do when I report circulation every month. If it's, it's a book, I don't care if it's an ebook or a book. If someone reads it, that's a checkout and I report that in circulation, um, when we're reporting to you each month. These, uh, separate those two things out. So, um, they're there. It's, uh, you know, up on the screen right now, you'll see our, like our library programs the year before, uh, you know, our, our, our visits, two hundred and twelve thousand visits in the previous year and forty thousand visits in the pandemic mid-year. Like, oof, you know, but we weren't counting curbside pickups. That's not a library visit. We don't take to count that as a library visit, even though traditionally someone running in the front door, picking their books up and running out is a library visit. So, um, in some ways it looks worse than it is, but it's just because of the way the, the statistical report, um, has to be. Uh, we talk about our policies, which are all in there. We talk about our, um, accessibility options. We talk about, uh, the meeting, New York State minimum standards, uh, which our library does. And then this, uh, synchronous program sessions and attendance. So that's where, when I talked to a little bit earlier about uh, something that we might have counted as an outreach previously is now, uh, an asynchronous virtual program. Because the librarian's here, but they're, they're dealing with a school, um, on the other end.
Jeff, before you keep scrolling, I saw, I caught something around accessibility. There were a bunch of, a few no's.
There are a few no's. So we don't have, we don't, um, um, we have an optilec. we have an optilec screen, a machine that increases the size for someone if they have a vision impairment. At the same time, we don't have jaws or window eyes or some of these softwares that some libraries have that help people blow up the size of the screen to read that. We do not have a refreshable Braille keyboard. If I was asked by anybody in the community for a refreshable Braille keyboard, I would have eight of them tomorrow. So in some ways, you know, we could have that. There are just some, some things that we don't have because we haven't seen the, the need to have them. Plus, the other thing is that much of our collection again is available electronically. And when we're talking about large print and text that can be screen read, those electronic collections are far more accessible than our traditional collections ever were or ever could be, you know, so our, you know, large print books, we can't get a selection of large print books that we want. We still buy some, but it's really just the top A-list authors that are coming out in large print. But if you get a book on, on Libby, can blow the print size up to whatever you want. So in some ways, just that, and that's not reflected here in the report. It's just the nature of the relationship that people have with the libraries and the collection, how they're using our collection. You know, and the vastly decreasing cost of some of these assistive technologies. We've certainly helped people have used our optilec reader in the past. And having an optilec reader in the house that would, you know, expand the size of a newspaper or something was a massively expensive item. Now hooking one up to a computer, this is at best 100 or hun- low hundreds of dollars items and much less than that. You can get a camera that can increase the size of, of text. It's, you know, the, the people individually are able to access so much of this techno- technology less expensively. It's just less of a role for the library to play. Not that I, my librarian heart doesn't want to. So, sorry, lots of talking. I apologize.
No, no, no. Thank you. Thank you.
So I mean, I, I, I am not going to bore you with this whole report. I would ask that pass it. Most of these numbers you have seen one way or another through the whole year, you know. I am happy to answer it.
I did read through most of it. You know, I looked at it. I look at it most years, you know, some sections, all of it. And I am ready to make a motion to accept this report as presented on pages 28 to 82 of the board packet.
Great. A second?
Oh, second. Oh, sorry. Let me get it. Let me.
Okay, great. Any discussion? Alls in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Motion carries. Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Emergency patron conduct policy.
Okay, we're going. Hold on. I got a lot of pages. Scroll, scroll, scroll. I can't scroll fast enough. Okay, I apologize. So here I, you know, so you heard the public comment. We had some, some lively conversations with some patrons about that. I did want to read something I asked. I sort of checked in, said, how are things going this weekend? This past weekend, I was, gave some special instructions to the folks that were there just to try to cool, cool things down a little bit in case someone was coming in and trying to cause some, you know, basically ruin a librarian's day in the library, which is the net effect of most of this. And I just, I just want to read that a little bit because I said, you know, how are things going? Saturday was relatively quiet. You know, but we've had several people come into the library this weekend without masks. We had one mother and her kids just turn around and leave when told that our mask policy was still in place. Everyone else puts on masks without a fuss. Sunday, however, was a different story. Within the first 15 minutes, we had people come in annoyed about the mask. One woman wanted to know why and said we shouldn't be requiring them. But she did, did put the mask on when told her it was our policy and that the board was going to be discussing it this week. Another couple came in and just straight up argued with me about it, questioning why and saying how it's stupid and masks are more dangerous than not wearing them. They did eventually put, put their masks on grumpily. After that, one of our regulars commented about still wearing masks and asking why he had his mask on, but he's a regular and why do we have to, we have to tell him to pull it over its nose, his nose a lot. He was very unhappy. We had to speak with a tutor who was argumentative and told her we were violating New York State, whatever that means, by requiring masks, did eventually put the masks on. And throughout the day, we've had some people come in without masks and just put them on when they were told the policy is in place, which I have to say thankfully is the default. And I just, sometimes you ask me, how's the staff dealing with this? What's, what are their experiences? I just wanted to read a little bit of a, a day in the life, you know, this one particular thing. It did seem to be coming a little bit too ahead this weekend. I'm glad it wasn't more of a head than, that maybe it seemed like it could have been just great. But I just wanted to, to have a conversation here tonight because I told the patrons that we would be having a conversation about this. Many people are, you know, confused, but they see the MVP arena completely dropped its vaccination and mask requirements at all. And there's 8,000 people at a C in a basketball game this weekend, right? You know, what do you mean? Why are you doing this? Some people seem to think that we'll be kicking them out if, because they don't come with a mask. I'm like, well, I have lots of masks. I have, I'm required by our pandemic response plan to have thousands of masks available, and I do. They are there and available to the public, members of the public as they come in. Again, most people would inform that we still have the policy might, you know, look, but then put it on, but then others are grumpier about that. He was sort of, not many of them come up to the level of the public comment during that period, but the daily the staff are dealing with this, right? I think generally speaking, I had a conversation with the president today about this. Generally speaking, the staff is in favor of keeping the masks on and that, you know, they would rather have this sort of hassle of enforcement over the fact that just not having masks at all. So what I've, in the patron conduct policy, I'm recommending that we allow some space in those public meeting rooms where I have HEPA air, air filters in there, that we would allow people to be in that room with the door closed. They can have their masks off inside the library. Now, this is largely exactly the same policy that we've operated with the staff under since the day one of us coming back in the pandemic. So staff members who are in an office by themselves can have their masks off while they in, in the mask alone with the door closed. So, and we don't have HEPA filter cleaners in every office. We have the MIR filters in the, in the overall system. But just as a way of maybe offering some folks who are really struggling with their masks, a space in the library, they come in the library and study or, or whatever. The reason we hadn't done that up to, up to this point is that they are turning that space over. If they have to share that space among people every hour or, you know, depending on how long they're in that room. But I'm recommending that we create that space. So that's one. Just removing some things about, you know, it's, we still had in there that we were encouraging the patrons to conclude their browsing in a half an hour. That hasn't been the case for months and months. So we're just cleaning that up a little bit. I think we're not going to be requiring masks in, in outdoor events unless we get to the summer. We'll deal with that as we approach the summer program season. If there's a new variant or something that we have to deal with, not where the numbers look to be heading right now. And then, you know, one of the questions that I have from staff members is our final and inevitable backup, if someone is refusing to comply with our mask policy, is that I call the police. Thankfully, in the past two years, I have had to do this precisely one time. Mostly people understand that this is our policy. The library staff, there's, there's vast spectrum of enforcement on this that happens before we get to the police and the staff are very practiced at that. And then none of that has changed. My question is, is that still a reasonable response that you would expect out of me mostly or other staff members that they would have? You know, if someone's not complying with our, with our mask policy that we would call the police and ask them to, to leave. Now, most of the time I would anticipate it. Certainly the one time I had to do this, there was an abuse of staff, threatening behavior, all this other stuff that would have qualified it completely separately from the mass issue. But I did want to have a, have a conversation about that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that as the last, as the last resort. I think if you get to that level, it's not about the mask usually.
I think that's our experience as well. But it just, it's there as the sort of final thing. And I wanted to make sure that that was still.
Jeff.
Yes.
I would like to go back a little bit to some of the things you said earlier, some of your thoughts behind where you are, where I'm in favor of this write-up as it's written. I want to clarify that when we talk about people going to the MVP arena and 6,000 people in an arena once with no masks after they have showed a vaccination card. We are not talking about vaccinations. I mean, let's, let's remember that people are carefully forgetting the fact that a lot of these places that are de-masking or, you know, taking that away because the only people there, it's very common in theaters. Okay. You go to Proctors and these places, you have to show at least a while ago. I don't know about right now. But a lot of places were only vaccinated people and then masks were optional. Okay. So and there is a lot to be said for that. Okay. People may not agree with it, but we never went that route. Okay. So I just want to remind you of that, that we said we're not getting into checking vaccination cards. Okay. So.
Right.
But that is something to, just to remind people of. Okay. But I'm in support of this policy as it's written.
Jeff, I, I imagine you've had numerous conversations with directors at other libraries about that.
I have. Yes.
I feel like, and not that I've done like a, you know, big review or anything, but it feels to me like the majority of libraries are keeping masks in place.
Yes. And that's, yes. And that's actually the real reason I was watching the Saratoga Springs library board meeting tonight. So yes, actually, all of our sort of similar peer libraries in our area are the outlier library in our area is the Schenectady County Public Library. They lifted, you know, they made masks recommended. They lifted the mask requirement. They're a county entity and the, and the government, the county, the county office lifted it for all county buildings, which I found kind of interesting because they were more strict than a lot of places earlier on in the pandemic. And now they're, you know, they've lifted it for, for their library. That's, you know, that's, but you know, that's just they, they are chartered significantly differently. That seems to be the outlier. Everybody else has remained with masks on. We, we have, we talk about this incessantly. I am watching the numbers towards a timing. I'm so thankful that there is a deep plunge in these numbers. And I know where we were when we dropped them last summer. And I know where we were when we re-implemented them last fall. And we are still significantly above where we put the mask back on when there was no state mandate. Meanwhile, back on the library in the fall, I'm, I'm waiting for the day when we get back to this sort of shoulder number where, you know, where we were removing the masks, you know, last summer and early fall. No one could want this more than me. I promise you. And if the numbers keep going in the same direction, we may be there quickly, but we're not there yet in my estimation. Hi, Caroline.
Hey Jeff, you answered my question, which is, you know, that we know, obviously, we know the number that we're comfortable. I think we have an idea of the percentage that we're comfortable dropping the mask requirement. And obviously, not obviously, but I am in support of continuing that policy. But is it fair to communicate to patrons when the policy will change? I mean, I, I don't know if that will cause more problems or not, but is it, is it fair to say, you know, how, obviously, we know we can do this. If, you know, it's not a legal question, but is it fair to say to a patron, we are waiting until we reach, until the, the numbers reach this, this percentage. At that point, we feel based on, you know, the expressed wishes of our staff and our patrons and you know, taking into account some of the, the vulnerable populations that we serve, it is there that we will feel more comfortable dropping that the board feels more comfortable dropping the mask policy.
That's reasonable. You know, we have it, you know, in our pandemic response plan, we working with CDC guidelines and they're still, our whole county is still in high spread. We're not even either significant or, and we got down into the, to the summer, we got down into moderate, which is, I think, where I was when I, we, we got comfortable. And there, there's lots of different COVID trackers out there. I tend to go right with the CDC, try to go right to the, to the head there. So I think I could easily communicate that, you know, we're, we're going to do that in concert with our other co-libraries in the area. And I, you know, I hope that this takes us by surprise how quickly we get there. Wouldn't that be a wonderful spring present for Jeff? So that's, that's what I hope. And that's, you know, well, I will operate under as long as I don't hear anything different tonight.
Um, Jeff, along this, this, these, this same discussion, I would think too, that our policy might change depending on what schools end up doing in early March. And so that might be a different metric than percentage of cases. So I just would throw that out there. I'm also sure you can say, we're going to change our policy on this one metric, when actually it could be something else.
Lots of different metrics, right? I think that's where I kind of integrate all of that when I'm making my recommendation to you. And I think it might be politically very difficult for us to continue a mask mandate past the time if the Bethelm schools were to determine to, to drop that. I think that would be a a heavy lift for us. Then again, you know, they've got more control over their, maybe they don't. I don't know. So yeah, I think that's, that would be another factor that we'd absolutely look to them for a little bit of guidance on this as well.
Yeah, they, they don't have under five, so.
That's the, that's, yep, also that.
Right.
Charmaine, yep.
I, I just have, I think what can be helpful with the public is to distinguish between what's a board policy and what's a governor's mandate. Cause I think people equate the two. And that's why we can do something because it's a board policy versus the mandate. So they're, they're not, I mean, they're not equal and they're not the same thing that, but it's humble. And I just have a question. And actually, our resident lawyer might be able to help me with this. Can you call, can you ask the police to come in and enforce a board policy if in fact they're not, for example, threatening staff or something like that? So can a police force come in and enforce a policy?
Yes.
That's in place because of the board trustees?
Yes.
I just want to know.
Absolutely. Yep. They can.
I, my guess, and I think Jeff can bear this out, is that as, as Mark said earlier, it's usually not about the mask. So I imagine that other factors that that you would call the police for probably have, have come into play by the time we get to that point. Am I right?
That is correct. But there's lots of reasons. You know, it's not illegal to scream, you know, F you, the real words out at, in a staff member's face out in the world, right? That's not illegal. That's protected speech. But the fact of the matter, if you do that inside the library, that's outside the policy. I'm still going to call the police if you don't knock it off. So, yes.
Thank you.
Again, it probably gets threatening. And then there's like all these things, you know, oftentimes when the few times, the blessedly few times we have to call the police, almost always there are confounding issues and someone's having a real bad day.
Jeff.
Yep.
Two, two questions. In the past, I believe the board has very occasionally taking, taken action to ban people for some specified period of time.
Yep.
Okay. And I'm just wondering if we would want to consider that as an option for any of the situations that we deal with if somebody is being, you know, abused, maybe abusive, but we don't want to call the police or whatever.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yes, the answer is yes. So, so I am under our patron column policy. I and the staff are empowered to remove somebody from the library for the day in excess of that. And, you know, usually end those things when I have to kick somebody out of the library. And I say, I hope tomorrow is a better day for you and I'll have you back in the library. If something is more severe than that, then, you know, I'll be, I contact you. And then that is a, a, a discipline or an effect that is voted on by the board. And then if someone then returns the library, the thing they're guilty of is trespass because they're not allowed in the library.
Okay.
We take that seriously. The number of people we have done this to is less than a handful. But it, it has to be there for people who behave significantly outside the patron conduct policy. And then usually when they're doing that, they're also brushing up against the law on the other side too.
Thank you. And the other point that I wanted to make was when and if we put some word out about, you know, when or under what circumstances we think the, the mask policies would be ended. Any write-up like that, I would, maybe we could put something in there about everything is contingent about the library having the ability to field a team. Don't use my words, but you know, people forget that it's people working at the library and they, they can get sick or, you know, whatever, like pushes too far. And guess what? We won't have the people to open the doors.
Have, have gotten sick, right? Have gotten sick. And we were super proud of the staff that we were able to stay open this winter. Don't think that was easy. It was not. So, so I appreciate that.
That should perhaps be woven into something that you write up about, you know, the ability to field a team. And we were lucky. We didn't have to close the doors for staff, for staffing issues.
Right.
Jeff, how much do you feel that it's possible or that it's happening that people are coming in without a mask just to see what happens? Or just to kind of test it?
Some, is it possible? Uh, yeah. Is it, does it happen? Yeah. You know, but we are, you know, I think people would, that would Yeah, you know, but we are, you know, I think people would, that would be a lot more. If we weren't providing the masks for folks, you know, we, we, we work so hard at not cutting. I want everybody to use the library. So, you know, you, you're not comfortable in the library? I will bring the book outside to you, I promise. We have curbside pickup, we will bring it to you. Look at all the e-collections we have. We're trying to make a little space in the, the public meeting rooms, you know? I, I'm trying to be as accommodating as reasonably possible that protecting the state for the staff, as Mary said. But yeah, I, that was some of my instructions to the staff this weekend were specifically about my concern that this was becoming enough of a thing that, you know, on the weekends, we have fewer number of staff people in the building. There's less backup. I made myself available, as did some of the other supervisors this weekend, should be a bit needed. And luckily we were not, thankfully. But, you know, that's, yeah, that's a, that's a distinct possibility. I think as it's that perception, this is the thing, we're dealing with the public, whatever this is, this amorphous monster, right? That's not fair. This is a amorphous thing. And people, you know, shift what their feelings shift all over the place. And we, you know, we are dealing with that, those impressions of those people. So some people are going to come in and press on the, on that. I appreciated the concept of the silent majority. Every once in a while, they speak to us. Frequently people will come to me and say, you know, particularly parents of small children, but not necessarily, that they feel that the library is a comfortable place for them to come and they feel safe with the fact that we have a relatively strict, but I hope kind enforcement of, of a mask policy. So.
I was just going to say, when we were talking about referring people to either numbers or county statistics, I've seen a number of signs where they've either included, you know, like a QR or URL or some. I think when you put the information out about, you know, we're filing this guidance, you're also assuming that people are also following that guidance.
Fair enough.
I'm not sure that that's always the case with anybody that's like walking up to the door. So, you know, I can see the people, you know, they, I, I was there this weekend and saw the nice red sign on the door. And I was like, yep, it gets your attention. But if you're somebody that that's going to like make your back get up and get all excited about, I feel like giving people some more additional resources or documentation of what we're talking about. I mean, I work for the state. I, I've been walking around downtown and the, and the buildings down there, we've had those signs up. They changed those signs a while ago to ma- basically make people recognize we're all in this for Albany County because that's where you are living right now. And these are what the statistics are in our county right now. So if you're, you've got your head in the sand, here they are. So I don't think that's ever a bad thing to say to people, to make them aware of things. And I've seen, you know, I was in the grocery store this weekend and they had this CDC High County sign up on the door. And I was like, well, that's really helpful for the people that, you know, are just saying, but the governor just took the mask mandate off. So I, I feel like people want to be confused about things when they can and, or act like they're confused. And I, I think whatever we can do to help them understand the reasoning and logic to what we're doing is, is a good thing.
Okay, great. I can see Kristen taking some notes.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just echo, like a little bit of signage to explain that we're trying to protect our staff to maintain the viability and our ability to run the library as well as to protect our, our vulnerable populations, right? Who, who we absolutely serve, right? And need to serve and need to give access to.
Yep.
Signage to that effect, I think would help people who are confused.
Okay. Well, listen, I'll, I'm happy to, signs are cheap. So we will, we will work on that and, and they're just good, as Lisa was saying, it's just good to change every once in a while. People need to get out, you know, they, oh, you know, it's like moving the milk around the grocery store. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Okay, do we need a motion on that?
I do.
Okay, a call for motion on the change in emergency contact policy?
So move.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, great. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, say aye. Uh, okay, any opposed, extensions, motions carried?
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate the discussion. It's a, it's a difficult one. I appreciate it though.
Sure. Long range plan, draft, long range services plan recommendation.
Maybe Kristen will help me remember where I'm supposed to go to find that one.
Okay, hold on. I think if you just go into the board of trustees page.
Okay, yep, give me a sec, yep, 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 go on, go on, go on.
Cause I don't, it did not get in the packet.
Okay, I'm going to stop the share then. Back over here, sorry, you have to deal with my sound effects.
And it's going to be under the January 20th meeting.
Okay, there we go. Bring that up, make it big in it for everybody and share that back out. LRP services plan draft. Great, okay. So the long range per services plan, long range planning committee met. And at the, at the last meeting, this is, we had, it was a busy many, month for committees. So thank you for all your hard work, everybody. I really appreciate it. And at that meeting, the, the committee recommended that we unanimously recommended the long range services plan for discussion at the full board and recommend its approval at this meeting.
Okay, anyone want to make a comment on that meeting? I think, again, we looked at this for a while. Harmit, do you want to say anything or?
No, really, nothing to add. I think the, yeah, the plan is more or less unchanged here for a little while.
Okay.
I, I attended as an observer. I thought there was some small significant discussion and I feel confident with the draft that's being put forth before the board.
Okay. Any discussion, any motion on the, on the, on the plan?
I'll make a motion to, to approve the long range service plan as published if no one has any questions.
I second.
Great. A discussion on that. Thank you, Harmit, for all your work on that.
I, I'm just minimizing something, I didn't see the date. Okay, the, the years are there at 2021 to 24, okay.
We'll, 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 we'll screech that to 22 to 25, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Okay, motion, any opposed, motion carries? Thank you. Building committee update?
So I can go really quickly, if you want me to. Just really quickly, the, the building committee met with, with an architect to talk about the possibility of doing some, interview with an architect. Clearly, we have an architect that we've worked with for the long range plan and they're, they're still in the mix. So it's Paul Mays. We met with another one and we have, looking at two more interviews for architects before we, the building committee would then have a recommendation back to the full board for an architect that the library would work with to actually design something, which would then come, it would be that first step in a, in a building project.
Jeff, I just have a quick question because we met, I think the interviews were, I can't even remember the date. It was a Friday, I remember that.
Yep.
Wasn't it Rose Friday? Has someone gotten back to that architect and told them that we are, we're interviewing? So there'll be a certain timeframe before they hear from us?
Actually, they said they were, the next communication was supposed to come from them. They said they would have a proposal to us and I haven't, I haven't received that yet. So, so the ball's in their court. Hopefully that comes along soon. And I have had a conversation with another one and I now have an email contact at another firm.
Great. Okay, any questions on that?
And I'll just say, being, participating in those interviews, I thought was a great discussion. And I think it'll set us up well to just have another, one of the sessions with the other architects who are coming in. It really kind of helps us build off of that, so I was very pleased with it.
I just have one quick question. Have we spoken to any of the people that we are interviewing about when they would be available to do this work? Some, sometimes, you know, people get busy in the summer during construction work and they say, well, our real working time is the winter months. So where are we with the, you know, will they be able to work on it or are we? Well, go ahead.
Yeah, so that's, that is one of our questions. We have some different answers on that, but absolutely it was the sort of the timing of it, both as it relates to the New York State Construction Grant, our SED facilities approval and getting that timing right, when that would, the design would have to be completed in order to have it pass through. And then also we had some discussion about budget vote, you know, you know, bonding votes too on that. So that's way, way out in the future, at least way out in the future. So yes, absolutely, that's a factor, that would be a factor. Some of these architects are extremely busy. They, when I contact them, they're very upfront about that. You know, we're, we're super busy, we're not going to be able to take your work right now, so.
Okay.
And I think one of the things we did discuss, at least for the architect we, we interviewed, was their, you know, basically their willingness, their enthusiasm for help shepherding us through the state ed process also. Because that's, you know, once you get the design and the board approves something, it's getting everything approved by state ed is the thing on itself, so.
Yeah, yep. And, and that's sort of a key to assessing out when we're assessing a potential architect is, you know, when we say those things, are they like, yes, 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 absolutely, here's how we deal with that? Or are they like, hmm? And if you're not really aware of that process and that cycle, it may not be the, it may not be the right architect for us.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
And thank you to the committee and specifically Harmit. I know he's been the leader on this.
Sure, no problem, thanks.
Okay, great. Any other questions on that going into future business? Any comments? Or I?
No, just to, just a reminder, put the fine thing on as the next agenda.
You bet.
Yeah. Okay, any other future business? Okay, public participation?
Oh, let me go back and check, hold on. Exciting. Me. I have received, oh, hold on. I have one, okay. It's from Ann Moore, who has a frequent visit to our board meetings. I have a question about fines. How much does charging fines actually change behavior? If we actually collect $35,000 a year in fines, I would say collecting them does no good except to collect money for the library. Not sure its purpose of, not sure it's the purpose of fines, is it? So there we go.
Okay, great, thanks, thanks for that. Okay, now we want to go into executive session. So I need a motion, movement of executives.
So the motion we would be seeking might be similar to a motion to adjourn to executive session for, to discussion of topics related to contact negotiations pursuant of Article 14 of civil service law.
I make such a motion.
Great, thanks, Mary, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, seeing no opposition, motion's carried. So we'll move into executive session.
Okay, give me a sec.
Sure.